...the regularly scheduled meeting of the Beloit City Council. Today is Monday, April 21st, 2014, at 100 State Street, Beloit, Wisconsin. Can we get a roll call?
Roll call shows all councilors present except for Councillor Haynes.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item three, Special Orders of the Day and Announcements, 3A.
A proclamation declaring April 25th, 2014 as Arbor Day.
Councillor Lupke.
It's my honor to read this proclamation and give it to Officer Hurdor. Official proclamation, whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees, and whereas this holiday, called Arbor Day, was first observed with the planting of trees in Nebraska, and whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife, and whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products, and whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community, and whereas Beloit has been recognized as a Tree City USA by the National Arbor Day Foundation and desires to continue its tree planting ways, now therefore, on behalf of Mark Spritezer, President of the Beloit City Council, do hereby proclaim April 25th, 2014 as Arbor Day in the city of Beloit and urge all citizens to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands and to support our city's urban forestry program. Be it further proclaimed that all Beloit citizens are encouraged to plant trees, to brighten the community, and promote the well-being of present and future generations, dated this April 21st, 2014.
Thank you, Mr. Lupke. On this, our 26th year of being Tree City USA, I'd like to invite everyone to our Arbor Day celebration. This year is going to be held at Horse White Park on Friday, the 25th, at 10:00 a.m. Please attend. We're going to have Mr., our local historian, Mr. Bulgren, give a little synopsis on Horse White Park and the history of. So I hope to see you all there. Thank you very much. Item four is Public Hearings, 4A.
A resolution authorizing an amendment to the planned unit development master land use plan for the property located at 1877 Madison Road, Woodman's. The Plan Commission recommended approval, five to zero.
Ms. Christensen.
On September 3rd, 2013, the City Council reviewed and approved a PUD for the Woodman's property. This PUD master land use plan authorized the demolition of the existing gas station, car wash, and quick loop facility, the demolition of the existing 34,000-square-foot warehouse, and the construction of a new gas station, car wash, quick loop facility at the southern end of the property. This was approved, subject to conditions which are listed in the resolution at the back of your packet. They are switching or rotating the building 90 degrees to the east and relocating the canopy and gas pumps, and you have that standard condition in every PUD resolution which says any major changes have to come back to this public process. We felt that was a major change, so we brought it back through this process. The proposed improvements remain unchanged. Essentially, they're just rotating it. They did include the sidewalk that you required last time and the bike rack, and part of the rationale why they changed it is that their original PUD had shown access coming off of that entrance street to Woodman's, and engineering required a traffic study, and the traffic study showed that that wasn't going to work, and I think Woodman's themselves felt that that turn movement was too difficult if they didn't move things around. So the proposed plan was reviewed by Plan Commission at their last meeting, and they did recommend approval, subject to the conditions listed in the PUD resolution, which is that this approval authorizes the construction of a detached 3,150-square-foot convenience store with three quick loop bays, a new canopy over four dual gasoline and diesel pumps, and a detached 2,112-square-foot automatic drive-through car wash with two bays on the Woodman's property located at 1877 Madison Road, and these improvements may be located on the same zoning lot, tax parcels, existing grocery store, and warehouses, and then the second condition being all of the conditions imposed by the prior PUD resolution dated September 3rd, 2013.
I'll now open the public hearing. Please come forward and state your name and address. Is there anyone wishing to speak at the public hearing on item 4A? Is there anyone wishing to speak on item 4A? One final time, is there anyone wishing to speak on item 4A? If not, the public hearing is closed. Are there any questions from councilors? It's been moved, is there a second?
I'll second.
It's been moved by Councillor Levy, seconded by Councillor DeForest. Questions or discussions, Councillor Kincaid.
Ms. Christensen, when we had a car wash installed on Milwaukee Street, there was a good deal of interest, and we were shown elevations of what it would look like and how it would work. Will the Planning Commission and the council have an opportunity to see what Woodman's is proposing?
No, there is an actual overlay district that relates to how Garage Doors face Milwaukee Road, which does not exist out on Madison Road. I was under the impression they were bringing boards, which is why, there's an easel there, but they didn't bring them tonight. Oh, you do have them. They do have some elevations and some drawings if you'd like to see them.
Thank you, I would.
I'm Phil Waitman with Building Systems in Madison, Wisconsin, here to represent Woodman's. A revised rendering of the new orientation of the building, looking from Woodman Lane to the east of the proposed gas loop. We have the reoriented gas canopy with the convenience store and loop bays, and then in the background, we have the car wash, which is between the existing warehouse and the new gas station and loop center. One elevation. And then the second would be from the intersection of Woodman Lane and Madison Road, looking towards the north. The convenience store towards the corner, the loop bays further to the west, and then beyond the car wash.
You're installing a new sidewalk and four bike racks.
Correct, yes.
Where do they go?
It goes from, the sidewalk would go from Madison Road past the drive access for Woodman's Distribution Center and up along Woodman Lane and access the property for the convenience store and gas station.
Are there any bike lanes to the north, let's see, towards the residential area?
The bike, no, we're not adding any.
I just wondered about utility of, I always like to see bike racks, I do a little cycling myself.
We do have bike racks, yes.
Yeah, I understand that. Thank you.
Yes.
One other question. You said at the Planning Commission that there would be seven additional truck bays for loading material or product?
There'd be six.
Was that on the original? I didn't really tune in on that.
Yes.
So that new building, which is an extension of the building you're going to tear down, was shown on the preliminary? Thank you.
Are there other questions?
When this project started, they started without the quick loop, and so they did the warehouse piece first as a separate approval, and then when they came back, they did the PUD for the car wash. So there was a separate action that occurred before council a while back on the warehouse itself. That's why I think it's not included on this one, because they did this piece separate.
I see, thank you. I do have one other question. With the additional truck traffic, has there been a traffic analysis about the additional trips to that site with truck traffic?
All I can tell you is that during site plan review, engineering for the warehouse project, that engineering would have reviewed that, and I'm assuming that they were comfortable with the traffic volumes, but I can't really speak to that tonight.
Are they comfortable with the detention, the additional detention at this time?
Well, they must be. I mean, they signed off on the site plan, so.
We haven't, you know, seen that.
I don't want to put Greg on the spot, but he would be the best one to answer that question, but as we've gone through site plan review, I mean, we deal with the detention and the traffic analysis as part of that, and engineering has signed off on the site plan, so I believe so.
Councillor DeForest.
Thank you, I have a follow-up question about how detailed the traffic study was. I'm glad that we required one. Do we know the volume of truck traffic, or did it not distinguish?
That we required a traffic study if we were going to authorize access off of Woodman Lane. They didn't submit the traffic study to us, but at Plan Commission, a different gentleman from Building Systems had said that the traffic study showed that that access wouldn't work, and engineering required the traffic study because they've all went through Woodman's on the weekends and just knows what traffic is like there, and did not think, felt that, the traffic engineer felt that traffic would get backed up on Madison Road if we allowed that left turn right off of that, and so he required the traffic study before we would allow that access point.
That's good. It seems like it would be safer for the students that are walking to McNeil Middle School as well, because they would be walking along that corridor and not have that driveway to cross, so I was glad to see that. All right, thank you.
Is there any other questions or comments? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That's approved, six to zero. Next item is item five, Citizens' Participation. We've reached the point in the meeting for members of the public to speak to the council about issues that are coming before us or may come before us in the future. The council will not act on any requests this evening unless the item you are speaking about is already on our agenda, but we may act on requests at a future meeting or may refer a speaker to staff for assistance. We ask that you hold your comments to three minutes or less and avoid making personal attacks. I do have one sheet here for participation from Rachel Petit. Please step forward and state your name and address for the record.
Hi, I'm Rachel Petit. Do my home address?
Sure.
1514 Kenwood Avenue, Beloit. Reason for my being here this evening, I'm also speaking on behalf of Jeremy Tabel, who is the owner of the business that I work for. We have Jagger Bay Tanning Company, which is also associated with Jagger Bay Properties on 822 Broad Street. Our parking lot is adjacent to the building, we own our parking lot. What we're looking for is a possible ordinance change to hold to outdoor events. The reason that we're looking at it being an ordinance change is so that we can host those events, to have vendors, possibly cut some of those costs with the vendor fees, and allow them to be on the property. We're looking for a customer appreciation extravaganza in June and an annual year anniversary in September. We would have vendors that would complement our business as well as intrigue the community. They'd be local vendors so that we can help support the community. No alcohol would be served on the premises. Food vendors, we know that if there were any food vendors, they would need a Rock County Health Department permit.
Councillor Levy.
Can I suggest that someone get with this individual to assist her with that, because for these events to let her know who she should talk to, so we can kind of follow up on that? Just appoint her to the right person.
Mr. City Manager, would we follow up on that?
Take care of that.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak under Citizens' Participation? Is there anyone else wishing to speak under Citizens' Participation? Third and final call, is there anyone else wishing to speak under Citizens' Participation? If not, we'll declare that closed. Item six is the Consent Agenda. All items listed under the Consent Agenda are considered routine and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member so requests, in which case the item will be removed from the General Order of Business and considered at this point on the agenda. Is there any council member wishing to remove an item from the Consent Agenda? If not, the Consent Agenda consists of items 6A through 6J.
Move approval.
Second.
Moved by Levy, seconded by Kincaid. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That's approved, six to zero. Item seven is ordinances, we have one this evening, 7A.
A proposed ordinance to repeal and recreate Section 18.02 Sub-15 of the Code of General Ordinances of the City of Beloit, authorizing outdoor vending for certain events in city parks.
Ms. Jacobson.
In February, visit Beloit spearheaded a strategic doing campaign in the city of Beloit. One of the goals of this committee is to identify the interests and passions of the greater Beloit residents and really identify things that are not being celebrated at this time with the events that are currently being held in the city of Beloit. The committee is also looking into the changing needs or wants of grassroots movements in the city that are struggling to be successful in Beloit, typically for people that just maybe aren't as organized, don't have as much time, or perhaps don't have the funding for the events that they are passionate about. One of the teams, the team that I'm on, is planning a summer gospel jam to be held at the Harry Seymour Pavilion in the summer of 2015. The committee wishes to have professional food vendors on site for this event, which is why the ordinance is before you today. The summer gospel jam is a new event, it's not, there was a previous event that was gospel-related, but this is completely new, and it's open to the public, and all choirs in the greater Beloit area will be invited to participate. The summer gospel jam will likely be an annual event, which is why we want to change ordinance permanently so that it could happen annually, and I personally verify the remaining changes of the ordinance through the event planners. So the other amendments that have been made to the ordinance, I've personally reached out to all of those agencies to confirm that they're no longer being held in the city of Beloit, one of which actually had a date in 2005, so it needed to be eliminated anyways. Feel free to answer any questions you have.
Are there any questions? If not, this is on for suspension of the rules. Is there a motion to suspend the rules?
Motion to suspend the rules.
Is there a second? Moved by Councillor Lupke, seconded by DeForest. Is there any discussion on suspending the rules? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That's approved, six to zero. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll move on any line merits.
Moved by DeForest, seconded by Lupke. Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That's approved, six to zero. Item eight is appointments, 8A.
The Council President Committee Board Commission Appointments.
As Council President, I make the following appointments of fellow council members to committees for the coming year, to the Alcohol Beverage License and Control Committee, Councillor Kincaid, to the Appointment Review Committee, myself, Council President Spritezer, and Council Vice President Haynes, to the Business Improvement District Downtown Beloit Association, Councillor Lupke, to the Community Action, Inc. of Rock and Walworth Counties Board, myself, Councillor Spritezer, to the Community Development Authority, Councillor Levy and Councillor Kelly, to the Convention and Visitors Bureau Board of Directors, myself, Councillor Spritezer, to the Equal Opportunities Commission, Councillor DeForest, to the Landmarks Commission, Councillor Haynes, to the Metropolitan Planning Organization, Councillor Kelly, to the Parks Recreation and Conservation Advisory Commission, Councillor DeForest, to the Plan Commission, Councillor Kincaid, and to the Traffic Review Committee, Councillor Lupke. Those appointments will begin immediately, so we will, please consult your sheet to see when they meet, and we'll make sure that you get in touch with the appropriate staff person for those committees. Item 8B.
The Appointment Review Committee Appointments.
I, the undersigned Mark Spritezer, duly-elected President of the Beloit City Council, subject to confirmation by the Beloit City Council, hereby appoint the following citizen members to the vacancies and terms indicated below, said appointments being pursuant to nominations made and approved by the Appointment Review Committee at the regular meeting held April 14th, 2014. To the Board of Ethics, Philip R. Shields, 1229 Chapin Street, replacing Carol Ann Fox for a term ending December 31st, 2015. To the Municipal Golf Committee, Noah Sharmer, 1741 Indian Road, replacing Addison Senate to fill the position of youth for a term ending December 31st, 2014. To the Plan Commission, incumbent James Fariger for a term ending April 30th, 2017. Matthew L. Finnegan, 2212 Knollview Drive, replacing Thomas J. Nie for a term ending April 30th, 2016. Donald J. Tinder, 2357 Fieldcrest Road, replacing Anna Kelly for a term ending April 30th, 2015. And to the Police and Fire Commission, Craig W. Zastro, 1631 East Ridge Road, replacing Charles Lozinski for a term ending April 30th, 2019. Is there a motion to approve?
Move approval.
Second.
Been moved by Levy, seconded by Lupke. Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That's approved, six to zero. I'd like to announce the following vacancies and encourage members of residents of the city of Beloit to consider applying to one of these vacancies. On the Appointment Review Committee, we have two vacancies for residents. On the Board of Appeals, we have two alternate vacancies for residents. On the Board of Ethics, one vacancy for a former city councillor and two vacancies for residents. On the Board of Review, we have two alternate vacancies for residents. On the Community Development Authority, two vacancies for residents. Equal Opportunities Commission, one vacancy for a resident. Municipal Golf Committee, one vacancy for resident. The Plan Commission has two vacancies for residents, and the Traffic Review Committee has one vacancy for resident. Serving on city committees is definitely a worthwhile opportunity, and I would encourage residents to consider applying. Please contact the clerk's office if you're interested. Item nine, Councillor Activities and Upcoming Events, Councillor DeForest.
I was hoping with the new president, maybe I wouldn't always be going first, but.
We'll mix it up.
Okay. I just would like to share that I am excited to plan on attending the Arbor Day celebration, and want to encourage residents who are able to do so to attend as well, and I'm also looking forward to a couple events that are happening, we have a lot going on this weekend. I'll be attending the Earth Day Festival that's going to be held on Saturday, and then also going over to El Dia de Nino, the Day of the Child, that's going to be held a festival in the afternoon, and then the Beloit Public Library fundraiser is Saturday evening, so it's going to be a very full day. You'll probably see a lot of us out and about, and of course, there's always something to do in the city of Beloit every weekend, so please look for those opportunities, and would also like to extend a warm welcome to our new colleague. We're so fortunate to have Anna with us and know that she'll do a fantastic job. Thank you.
Councillor Lupke.
I have nothing at this time. Well, maybe just to say that I saw Ms. Walsh in the audience, and I think she can put the snowplows away now, but.
Let's hope.
Yeah, so, that's all.
Councillor Kelly.
So I would like to say that last week, both my mom and my dad and my daughter and her family have houses now in Beloit, so they'll both be moving to Beloit, and there's also that spelling bee for the library going on this Wednesday night at 6:00 at the Casa Grande, and they're looking for teams still as well as just spectators, and come and support that.
Councillor Levy.
I would also like to welcome Anna to the council. What I usually tell new people, don't be afraid to ask questions. You're down here to give your input, so make sure that, you know, don't ever be afraid to ask a question or give your opinion, because that's how we truly move the city forward, and as we grow as a councillor, when new people come on, we want you to share your ideas and what you see that's great for the city, because that's how we're all going to work together, and congratulations to Mark for taking over the role as president. I know you're going to do a great job, and I'm just looking forward to an exciting year. And Sheila, probably the reason you always go first is because usually we know you have a lot of talking to do, so we want to get that out of the way first. So there'll never be a meeting that goes by that I don't get Sheila for something, so I just want, so.
Councillor Kincaid.
Well, I won't be able to go to the spelling bee, but I am going to the Youth to Youth, and I'm, also I want to express my happiness at being appointed to the alcohol and beverage, what do you call it? Gate. And I've asked Kevin to be ready for a lot of questions and counsel to follow in his footsteps. Thank you for your cooperation.
And I also look forward to attending the Community Forum on Alcohol with Youth to Youth on Wednesday evening, and the Arbor Day presentation on Friday in the park, and hoping to make it to Earth Day as well on Saturday. Item 10, City Manager's Presentation, we have none. Item 11 is Reports from Boards and City Officers, 11A.
A resolution awarding the sale of $1,120,000 of general obligation promissory notes, Series 2014A.
Thank you.
Now you are.
Now I am, good, thank you, Mr. President. We had very, very good sale results this morning for both the note and the bond issue. As we do each year, we're going to do a single staff presentation for item A, which is the resolution approving the note sale, and item B, which is the resolution approving the bond sale. As the clerk just noted, the sale amount was actually reduced this morning. It's listed on the agenda at $1,135,000, was reduced to $1,120,000 because of the extremely good bidding that we received today. A lot of interest, a lot of bidders, good prices, the final actual interest rates and the buyer's discounts were well below what was anticipated, so we had a great outcome. The bond sale was originally listed on the agenda at $8,410,000. We netted out this morning at $8,165,000. Councilors will recall that about almost $6 million of that amount was a refinancing of bonds we issued back in 2007. The bidding results this morning, again, were excellent. We ended up saving considerably more money, both in present value and over the lifespan of the remaining debt service schedule for that particular bond issue. The City Council heard a brief presentation earlier this evening at our Agenda Review piece from Dawn Gunderson of Ellers regarding the results of the sale. Dawn is here again this evening, and I'm going to ask her to step to the microphone and again walk council and present to the community the bond sale results for both of these issues, and then, of course, council will have to consider each in turn as two separate motions to adopt the respective resolutions. So Dawn, if you would like to step to the microphone, I'll turn the presentation over to you and let you walk us through the numbers.
Thank you, Mr. Robb. You were provided with two packs of information, sale day reports, one for the promissory notes and one for the bonds. I will kind of summarize the promissory notes initially. We are pleased to have taken to market this morning your two debt issues. One of them was a promissory note, meaning that you're financing certain projects over a 10-year duration. They're primarily shorter-term items, capital equipment needs, we're typically done with promissory notes. So I'm going to, page one of the document that we presented, and for the public's benefit, is the summary of the issue. We did take this issue, as well as your bond issue, to S&amp;P Standard and Poor's to have the issue rated. Standard and Poor's did affirm your A1 bond rating. Standard and Poor's did affirm your A1 bond rating for all of your outstanding debt and assigned that to these two issues as well. So this morning with the results of the bid, we had four competitive bids on the note issue. The low bidder was Baird out of Milwaukee, Wisconsin. The bids ranged from a low true interest cost of 2.0029% and a high of 2.2436%. Baird was the low bid at the 2.0029. We've done a comparison of what our preliminary estimates, when you approved proceeding with the sale, to our final sales result. As was mentioned by the city manager, we were able to finalize this sale with a lower principal amount or lower par amount on the bids than we are, the debt that we originally had projected by 15,000. That's a result of the positive competitive process today. The true interest cost, as we finally adjusted, our planning estimates were 2.26%. The sale results, when we've adjusted it down for the lower amount, was 1.99%. So a difference of about 2.6 or just over a quarter percent in interest rates with today's sale results. The bottom line in terms of total principal and interest cost on the issue was $13,700 lower than our planning estimates. The action this evening will be approving, considering that resolution for the $1,120,000 that would be appropriate to be done by a roll call vote for the record. The document that you received summarizes the four bids that we received this morning and who the bids were from, summarizes the tax rate impact on both the bonds and notes are scheduled in that document as well, as well as the rating report. I do want to point out a couple things with that bond rating report and I identified as Standard and Poor's reviewed your credit quality, they do recognize the strong budgetary flexibility and from your 2012 audit and give you high regard for your general fund reserves. And it speaks well and does provide you for a strong credit rating. Also, your liquidity and your strong cash levels that you maintain also in respect to those reserves. Your very strong management and your demonstration with your good fiscal policies, so I applaud the city for their efforts there, and your budgetary performance. They did recognize that there are some factors here in Beloit that somewhat are out of your control as an elected body and some of that is resulting of your equalized value and your lower than average income levels and the recent declines in your market. So your efforts towards community development and new growth in your community is important to help raise those issues, but I applaud you on your A1 rating and that is certainly a benefit to you when you issue debt in the market. I'm glad to answer any questions on the note issue. If not, I'll, if there aren't, I'll move on to the bonds and kind of summarize that sale result.
Are there any questions? You can go ahead and move on.
Thank you. The other packet relates to the general obligation bonds. Now, bonds are a longer-term issue. These were for capital projects that have a longer life expectancy, your road projects, some of your major improvements into your infrastructure, they've been issued for 20 years. But the bulk of this refinance, or this debt issue for the amount of $8,165,000 was for refinancing of your 2007 debt issue. And we refinanced that for the purpose of savings and I'll address the savings benefit that you received by doing so. Again, this issue is rated A1 by Moody, or excuse me, by Standard and Poor's and the rating report, as I mentioned, is consistent with the one in the notes. We received six bids this morning, so a very good representation of interest in the market. Wells Fargo Bank out of North Carolina, Charlotte, North Carolina, was the low bid. The bids on this ranged from a low of 2.386% to a high of 2.5841, so you benefited by having a competitive sale as well on this one. We went to market this morning with bond size of $8,410,000. As a result of the favorable bids, we were able to reduce that down to $8,165,000, which is the resolution you'll be considering. In our planning estimates, we had estimated an interest rate of, a true interest rate of 2.75%. The actual results of the sale and the restructuring is at 2.38, so about almost a 0.4% difference in terms of our planning estimates to the actual results from the sale. The savings target, when we were here a month ago to move forward and you gave us authorization to proceed with this, we were looking at a savings on that refinancing of 200,000, just over $200,000. With the interest rates that we receive today and the ability to downsize that savings in real dollars to the city is 350,000. It's actually 150,000 more in savings target for having undertaken that refunding and refinancing that 2007 issue. As a percentage, it was a 5.36% of the principal that was being refunded. We usually target that at 2% before we even suggest that you look at refinancing, so a much better savings than a reasonable target. All in all, the total principal and interest then from our estimates of planning is down 253,000 from our planning estimates. So a very good sales results. The schedules attached to this document as well are the details of each of the bids, the six bids that we received, a comparison analysis again for the refinancing. I mentioned that that was 350,000 in a total savings over the life of the issue. That amounts to approximately $30,000 to $32,000 average per year savings between 2015 and 2024. So real dollars in terms of either levy support or some of your economic development TIF-supported projects. This document also includes the tax rate impact as well as the allocation of the issue for the purposes then for which it was undertaken. Again, I'm glad to answer any questions on this issue as well.
Are there any questions? Thank you. Is there a motion to approve 11A?
Motion to approve 11A.
Second? Moved by Lubke, seconded by DeForest, and we need a roll call vote.
Councilor Lubke?
Aye.
Councilor Levy?
Aye.
Councilor Kincaid?
Aye.
Councilor Spritezer?
Aye.
Councilor Kelly?
Aye.
Councilor DeForest?
Aye.
That's approved by a vote of six to zero. 11B.
A resolution awarding the sale of $8,165,000 in general obligation corporate purpose bonds, Series 2014B.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Kincaid, seconded by DeForest. Is there any discussion on this? If not, we'll have a roll call.
Councilor Lubke?
Aye.
Councilor Levy?
Aye.
Councilor Kincaid?
Aye.
Councilor Spritezer?
Aye.
Councilor Kelly?
Aye.
Councilor DeForest?
Aye.
And that is also approved by a vote of six to zero. Item 11C.
A resolution approving Visit Beloit's request to display public works of art on 14 city-owned properties. The Plan Commission recommended approval, five to zero, and the Parks Recreation and Conservation Advisory Commission recommended approval, six to zero.
Ms. Christensen.
Visit's Beloit 2014 tourism campaign will be Come and Knock on Our Doors, which will involve local and regional artists painting salvaged doors that will be strategically placed throughout the city. They're requesting authorization to install doors on the following city of Beloit properties: Big Hale Park, Gantry Park, Kruger Park, Leeson Park, Riverside Park, Telfer Park, Turtle Creek Park, the West Side Pond, the Grinnell Hall Senior Center, the Beloit Public Library, the well on Milwaukee Road, the fire station number three on Liberty Avenue, the Angel Museum, and City Hall. The Plan Commission did recommend approval of this request, subject to a couple of conditions which are listed in the resolution, which are that the doors shall remain outside of the public right-of-way and the paintings may not include any commercial messages or signage. All doors and support material shall be removed and the sites fully restored by August 31st. And then final placement on the approved sites shall be subject to approval by the division director with oversight over each site. In the event of an installation and location dispute, the city manager shall make the final determination. And Monica is here from Visit Beloit to give kind of some further explanation on the campaign.
Thank you. Currently, we have approximately 43 artists who are painting doors. We've had a lot of collaboration from the community. Christopherson Moving helped us get those doors to where they needed to go. Certainly, they've been donated by CCI and Hendrix, you know, they came with the remodeling of the hotel. And we are working with many of the schools, the high schools doing too. Beloit College is doing some and some of our middle schools. So we've worked with city engineering and public works and with Baderman on how we're going to be placing those doors. And do you have any questions?
Councilor DeForest.
Thank you. My primary concern is safety in terms of how the doors will not fall over. So you said you're working with Baderman.
And also Steve Boyes and Chris Harris, and they're doing some testing with some doors. They picked them up and, excuse me, Greg said he'd be willing to speak to that if you have some specific questions this evening too.
Okay. Is that possible that he could come to the podium and allay any of my fears or concerns about it?
As Monica said, the public work staff has worked with Baderman Engineering. This week, we're installing some prototypes of a couple of different variations, so we'll sort of evaluate those two and come up with something that we have to be able to, the intent is that we're going to install them ourselves, so we have to come up with something that's installable with the type of equipment we have and has adequate support to be safe. So we're confident that we'll have it in a good situation.
Related to that, before you step away, so don't make you do that, I brought this up in the Parks and Rec Commission. I wanted to make sure that once we remove the doors, that whatever mounting we're using, will that also be removed? I don't want to see any stakes or posts or any other kind of mounting that's still there all year and presents a trip hazard or some other kind of hazard.
Yes, with the Agenda item, it's just for this year, for the removal, you know, later this year. So we'll envision it'll be completely removed and there won't be anything remaining. It'll be simply a one-year activity with everything removed.
Okay. And then another question I have, unfortunately, I'm just thinking if for some reason a door is tagged, if there's graffiti on a door, what's the plan for how you'll handle that? How will that be addressed?
Well, I think we'd first need to see how it was tagged and on what condition it is. Personally, I think we could contact the artists. They're all, I said within the region, Beloit-Janesville, and let them look and see if we can make changes to that. But ultimately, if we can't and the door is re-tagged, we would need to remove it.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Great. There is a marketing plan that's developed with this. We have a jingle and a video and social media and traditional marketing plans to go along to encourage individuals to come to our city and view our doors and then shop, eat, visit our farmer's market.
Great. Any other questions?
Councilor Levy?
You kind of addressed a couple of them and first of all, let me say, I'm not against it. I just, for clarification purposes, I guess, what do you hope to gain by doing this? What's the purpose? Usually when we do something marketing, we hope to get something to benefit our organization and if your organization is trying to get people to stay here overnight, how is this falling into that whole plan?
Well, that's a good question. We are going to be holding it this summer. We have a lot of new tournaments that we're bringing to our community this year that have never been in Beloit before, so we'll be marketing at those events that we just don't want them to go to their hotel and then to the softball field. We want them to get out in the community, take pictures of the doors that we have here. We have an Instagram and a Facebook campaign that we're going to be doing. So it will bring our cityscape through social media. So we know that we will be doing this and marketing it with individuals that are coming here. Secondly, sometimes it takes someone to get into your community and visit your farmer's market and get on our river here in order for them to come back again for a second visit. And so our plan by social media again is having them taking photos, posting them, and then working to get them to come back again. You are absolutely correct. My ultimate goal is to get that heads and beds. But we're going to also get those that are coming here overnight out in our community more. That's the plan.
And then kind of a follow-up to Councilor DeForest's question is when this is all done and over, where does the doors go?
August 31st.
Where do we, do you have a place to store them? Because if you're putting all these doors up, at the end of the event, you're going to have a lot of big doors to put somewhere.
Correct. Well, currently, we have them stored.
Okay.
So we have a plan to restore them. And there is another organization that is looking to do something next summer in which they would be repurposing. I don't want to steal their thunder, but they've talked to us and there is, it won't be exactly like this, but it'll be something just as interesting.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Councilor Kincaid.
I too support the endeavor. I've been wondering if I might qualify to get a door. You know, I have entered a couple of plein air painting events and maybe that would be, you know, I'll come and talk to you about that later.
I think you absolutely can. I have exactly, let's see, 43? We have about 12 doors left.
Good. Do they all have numbers on them now?
No, there are no, the numbers are off.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Great, please do call me.
Are there any other questions? Councilor DeForest.
I'd just like to make one comment. Monica, thank you for the refreshing creative ideas that you've brought to the city. I'm really excited about what you've done already in the very short tenure that you've been here, so thank you. I think this will be a wonderful, new, hopeful attraction for people to come to our city and stay longer.
Well, I have a great staff and a very supportive board who have lots of ideas too. So thank you, Sheila. I appreciate that.
Is there any further questions or discussion on this item? Is there a motion to approve?
Move approval.
Moved by Levy, seconded by Lubke. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? This is approved, six to zero. Item 11D.
A resolution supporting Beloit Gateways to Opportunity Tiger 2014 Grant Application.
We're asking the city council to approve a resolution tonight, which would both authorize the city's participation in the application and support the application, which is essentially the same program as it existed last year. We endeavored to get this substantial grant, which is based on a minimum project amount of $10 million, and so we're going to try again. It's a, it's generally said to have about a 20 to one chance of getting it just based on the applications and the, you know, the total pool and the actual funding. Of course, we've done it now through one full cycle in cooperation with Ho-Chunk Nation. They've conferred with the administrators of the program, so we've made a number of enhancements to the application and trying to key into this year's, they change a little bit every year to make sure we're keying into this year's primary sort of narrative objectives. So it would be the same project that we studied last year and we had a public information meeting on. It's essentially adding the final lanes to Willbrook Parkway, reconstructing and realigning Colly Road in addition to Milwaukee Avenue improvements and other improvements such as a, in addition to the transit fleet and facility. So we just ask council's concurrence with this and we will see where it goes.
Are there any questions? Councilor DeForest.
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify to make sure, so all the components that we asked for in the previous year are the same virtually this year?
That's correct, yes.
Okay. And then with the application that we submitted last year, were we able to receive feedback based on that award so that we could make this one stronger?
We did, and the consultants conferred with the administrators who make the decisions and got feedback, which we believe has strengthened the application.
Okay, great, thank you.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second? Moved by Kincaid, seconded by Kelly. Is there any further discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? This is approved, six to zero. Thank you. Item 11E.
A resolution approving the Melrose Pyrotechnics, Inc. agreement for July 4, 2014 fireworks display.
Ms. Jacobson.
Good evening again. Room tax parameters are provided under state law under statute section 66. Although the statute doesn't specifically prohibit convention and visitor bureaus from funding fireworks displays, Visit Beloit does not fund the city of Beloit's Fourth of July display because it doesn't draw an overwhelming number of visitors and overnight stays. For over a decade, Visit Beloit has signed the contract with a fireworks... For over a decade, Visit Beloit has signed the contract with a fireworks vendor and has been heavily involved in the fundraising for the events. You may recall, Pops on the Rock is what this committee used to be called. In an effort to strengthen the separation from, their separation from the City of Beloit's fireworks, excuse me, display, Visit Beloit has asked the city to take over the signing of the contract. Visit Beloit is still committed to promoting the event. I'm on the Visit Beloit Board. Monica's here tonight. This is something that we're still encouraging everyone to participate in, and in fact, it opens up an opportunity for us to perhaps make it a bigger event than it has been in the past. They've asked the city to take over the fireworks contract, which we've reviewed. Tom Casper, City Attorney Casper, has worked diligently to make sure that the contract meets all of our liability needs, and the State Line Community Foundation has agreed to continue to solicit funds for the Fourth of July fireworks display. Melrose Pyrotechnics will meet with the Fire Department and ABC Supply prior to the event, as they do every year.
Are there any questions?
Motion to approve.
Moved by Loopkey. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Kelly. Ms. DeForest, Councillor DeForest.
Thank you. Has the city ever been in a position where we've had to contribute city money to the fireworks display, or has the State Line Community Foundation always been successful in raising the funds?
Before Visit Beloit took over signing the contract, it used to be in the city's hands, and I don't know the history of, that was, you know, well before my time, when it was crossed back over to Visit Beloit, but it used to be the city's event in the city's budget. I'm not sure if that was, how that decision was made in the past. The city would be liable for the changes because we set in the contract, but it's never, it hasn't been an issue in the recent future to obtain funds for the fireworks display. As you, it should be noted that in the last three years specifically that I can recall that I would have knowledge of, the hotel motel tax that comes in has continually increased. I'm sure you guys through budget season can recall that. So the City of Beloit could use that extra revenue should we need to, to fund the remainder of what's not, what wouldn't be raised if for some reason that couldn't be raised. But we're confident that the State Line Community Foundation will be able to raise $15,000 as they have in the past.
Okay. Thank you. And related to the vendor, I believe it was reported that we've used this vendor for a very long time. Are there any other vendors out there that we've considered, or?
Based on the timing of this event, you know, I'm speaking to you in April, and that would be in July, we didn't have a lot of time. We haven't put out an RFP because it's new. It's certainly something we could do. Based on the history with this vendor, this is kind of something that there's not really time to go out and find someone else, but we could do that in the future if we wanted to. I know that's something that we may do in the future, if that's what you would prefer.
Yes, I think it would be great to open the field a little. I understand what you're saying about the time constraints for this year, but maybe in the future to just look at other vendors, just because it's been so long that we've used the same one.
Yeah, and I'm not sure if you're alluding to the fact that there is a local fireworks vendor in the City of Beloit, but that vendor, I've been told, doesn't, this isn't in their wheelhouse.
Right. No, I'm just thinking there might be, there might be other vendors out there that could do different work. I don't want to say better work, but you know.
It's simple enough to do an RFP for anything that we purchase from a vendor, so.
Great. Thank you.
Councillor Levy?
And I, just to kind of echo that, I would kind of say, just to be consistent, we send an RFP out for a lot of things that we do, so that could be something going into next year that we do, because you never know, it could be someone out there. But I would also like to just caution us, I'm not saying it's a bad idea to sign the contract, but keep an eye on that cost, because as the years go by and companies and people don't have a lot of extra funds to donate to things, I just want to make sure that the city doesn't get stuck one year of signing a contract for, let's say, $15,000, and then we end up spending, have to spend that $15,000 because the donations didn't come in. Not saying that it will ever happen, but I always say, let's keep that in our minds, that that could happen at some point.
I think if that happened even one time, that it would be grounds for us to bring it back to the council to discuss.
Okay.
Wouldn't you agree?
Yeah, I would totally agree. But I didn't know, I mean, even if you signed the contract and we'd see where this year we have to shell out, you know, $15,000 or whatever, even if you bring it back, it's already for that year done anyway, so. I'm just throwing that out there.
Noted.
Thank you.
Is there any other discussion on this item? Did we already have a motion on this?
Yes.
Then, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? This is approved, six to zero. And item 12, is there a motion to adjourn?
Anna, it's your job.
I moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Moved by Kelly, seconded by DeForest. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? We're adjourned at 8:00 PM. My first meeting, we got out in an hour.